Let's call this regular council meeting November 19th, 2018. Please call the roll.
Flora?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Coos?
Here.
Zingie?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Bergeron?
Pressant.
Gage?
Here.
All right. Here it is. Please rise for the Fledger Legion.
I, Fledger Legion, certify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That brings us down to a public hearing on Resolution Number 1827-19, amending 2018 General Government Operating and Capital Budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the Fire Department in the amount of $8,200 and the Museum Department in the amount of $2,815. Is anybody here to speak to that? We'll close that public hearing and move into communications. I didn't see anything on the desk tonight. Persons to be heard. I went back and checked. Nobody signed up. We're moving right along. Brings us down to consent agenda, and if there's no objections, I'd like to move 7A1, 7A2, and B1 and B2 to the consent agenda. 7A1, 7A2.
What was the last one you were on?
What's that?
What was the last one?
Uh, B1 and 2.
Why not B3?
And we could do that if you're... Okay. Dave, we're almost to the point where you said the whole agenda...
We're trying, okay, Sam. If we could just put the executive sessions and we decided not to...
Hearing, uh, no objection, we'll move those on to the consent. Uh, Madam Burke, would you please... oh, I need a motion.
Oh, who? Yep. Second.
Second? Would you read the items, please?
Approval of the minutes, regular city council meeting of November 1st, 2018, accepting the 2019 Local Emergency Planning Commission, 2018 Emergency Management Program, and the 2018 State Homeland Security Program Grant Awards, Fire Department, financial and compliance audit for the year ending December 31st, 2018, Tuchler, Tucher and Walpole LLC, resolution eight, number 1827-09, amending the 2018 General Government Operating and Capital Budget to provide supplemental appropriations to the Fire Department in the amount of $8,200 and the Museum Department in the amount of $2,815. Budget transfer for Shonbar Road and Cook Street Water Main Repairs, 2018 Electric Division, 1989 Case Backhoe Number 183-28 Replacement Tyler Reynolds. Budget transfers for Port and Harbors Department Overtime Report for the quarter ended September 20th, 2018. Budget transfer, Fire Department Overtime Report for the quarter ending September 30th, 2018. Budget transfer, Electric Division Overtime Report for the quarter ending September 30th, 2018. Budget transfer, Sales, Marketing and Customer Service Division Overtime Report for the quarter ending September 30th, 2018. And budget transfer for the Sales, Marketing and Customer Service Division Bank Card Credit Card fees.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments? I have just one. Under the, uh, B2, um, the divisions, uh, 1989 Case Backhoe, I think that's a, a good option for the utilities to, to look at a, um, fuel carrier like that because they're pretty handy, but that, that backhoe is 19 years old with 3,600 hours on it. I think in the future, depending on how we're using those and the fact that we have some rubber track rigs, and, um, we also, I think, have at least two other case backhoes in the system, one at the Water Department and one over at Public Works, that we look at either Reynolds because a, a similar type size machine is 1,160 a week or 3,400 a month, and, uh, with the lack of hours on this thing, it might just, you know, something to look at as we move forward. Kind of speaks to a motor pool option, too, where we can utilize the equipment that we already own because it all belongs to the city. And, uh, and that's all I have to say about it. I think, again, I think it was probably a pretty good choice for what you guys are doing to get a, uh, offering for it. So, uh, anybody else? Please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingie?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to item 7A4. Uh, request to council contract number 18-24 and reject all bids and proposals received in response to contract number 18-24, KPU Telecommunication Subsea Fiber Cable Construction Project.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Judy.
I move that the City Council cancel contract number 18-24, KPU Telecommunication Subsea Fiber Cable Construction Project and reject all bids and proposals received for contract 18-24.
Second. You can move in second. Judy, you have anyone?
No.
Carl? Uh, do you have, just want to give a, kind of an explanation so those that are watching understand what we're doing.
When we put the request for proposals out, Mr. Mayor, it was on the assumption that everything would come together in a very short period and compressed period of time. Unfortunately, permitting did not move forward as we had hoped, and the financing plan that I had hoped to be able to put together vis-a-vis the operating budget for 2019 just was not doable. So, we want to step back relative to the financing and, and look at options, and before signing a contract, we want to have the permits, uh, in place, and that's where we are. And I think it just makes sense to, to cancel the bids and we'll come back again.
All right. Anybody else? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingie?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
And that's it. Uh, moves us on to number eight, doctors. We have none at this time. Brings us down to the manager report. Carl, what do you have for us tonight?
Uh, just a couple. Mr. Mayor, uh, I do want to note the appointment of Kara Jurzak as the new Assistant Public Works Director. I'm, I'm really excited about that, and I think she'll make a really good addition to the staff, and it, and it's great to see that we, we have opportunities and we can promote from within, and, and I think that's great. Uh, we did include a draft letter of support for DOT Federal Bridge Funding, uh, that we're going to move forward if the council has no objections. Uh, and the other report that I would note is the revised customer service hours down at the Plaza that we want to implement, and, uh, the manager, Kim Simpson, is here to answer any questions about that, but that, that's all I've got.
Thank you. And again, for the listening public, Kim, would you kind of tell us what's going on with the hours so people understand when you're going to be open and when you're going to be closed?
Kim Simpson, Division Manager, Sales, Marketing and Customer Service. Um, we'll be opening during the weekday at, um, 9:30, and that gives my staff an hour or two get the, um, processing time right now. Um, if you read through the memo, uh, most of the time that my people have is FaceTime. They're continually, they have somebody right there or they're on the phone with somebody, and they have very little time to actually get some of the work orders and some of the things completed. It's contributed to overtime and it has, but it's very stressful for them. We're not particularly busy always between 9:00 and 9:30, so we thought having that time for them to do their online training for Verizon or other trainings we do, we try and do a lot of training, and we have to rush in the morning, um, to make sure that we can get that done, and then it doesn't let them get actual work done. So, and we'll be opening at 9:30, and then on Saturdays, it's the same schedule normally as where we open at 10:00 and we close at 4:00, but we will be closing at 5:30 our normal time, so the hours will be 9:30 to 5:30 Monday through Friday, and then the same 10 to 4:00 on Saturday.
Thank you. Are we fully staffed?
No, we're not. We're, we're short three CSRs.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
I, I just want to thank you for getting right back to me. I had a question about the overtime, and I just kind of want to reiterate that anytime we do have a question about the reports that we get from the department heads, that we can go straight to the department head. Thank you for the very thorough response that you gave.
Oh, no, thank you for asking. I'm always thrilled when people actually read the whole packet.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks.
All right. Moving right along. Brings down, uh, first file?
None, Your Honor.
Uh, attorneys' files. Future agenda items.
Your Honor?
Yes.
This past week, uh, you guys were up at hand. Mel, I went to, uh, Chicago. I went to an international green build conference. I don't want my conservative friends to get up in arms here about the word "green," but, uh, it, it was, uh, it was illuminating. Uh, it, it, it really brought home the need for us as individuals and as a community to become sustainable. And it got me to thinking about what we had been doing with, uh, um, thinking about considering our hospital, had we even hired a consultant to help us evaluate, you know, what's going on with the hospital and what the best path forward is. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm been a lifelong rather than a catch a cannon. I got a window and I open it occasionally, and I look outside and I see we got lots of rain, we have lots of wind, we have some other sources of, uh, renewable power that we may be available. So, I, I think, and I would like to do, is kind of, uh, take our Electric Division and kind of consider those, uh, consider how we can apply some consultants to look at how we operate and how we interface with, say, SEPA, how we're using our existing facilities. Not to say that, you know, I'm identifying anything that's glowingly wrong with any of it, but I'd like to see if there's any way that we could get other hydro, uh, potential developed. You know, I, uh, look around and I see that we've got Triangle Lake on, uh, on, uh, Net Island, we've got, um, some other lakes here that have, you know, hydro potential. Instead of burning 750,000 gallons of fuel this year, maybe we could have diverted some of those funds or all of them to other natural renewable resources. So, I'm not going to put this forward right now, but I want to put this idea out to the council, you know, get, have them time to give it, give it some thought in how we might approach that, because I wasn't around when you guys came up with the idea of the consultant for the hospital, so I don't know how that all came about, but I'd like to apply something that's similar and give it the same kind of discussion. Maybe we can move forward from there and probably apply a modest amount of money in our, uh, budget, which is coming up for discussion soon. That's all I got.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else? So that brings us down to mayor and council comments. Dick?
Uh, none, Your Honor.
Emily?
Not much, but, um, one of the things that, when we're up at the, um, AML, I was in one of the three, um, I have it written down somewhere. Anyway, the, uh, conversation from, uh, with the Forest Service was that they actually have a grant, um, for opening up, um, uh, areas for recreation that can also be applied for, by the city or municipalities for the, um, ability to create those areas, but also might even be a potential for, when we were talking about the, um, spot up behind us for, um, doing the filtration. So, say, say we, um, were able to apply for that grant, we, and open up that road system as recreational, but then later on have one spot just designated for, um, the filtration system in the future, and also might even work with what, uh, Sam's talking about.
Thank you.
I have her phone number and all that, but you can even apply for the grant multiple times, so you might get the grant for one year and you can add on to it. So, it wasn't something that you could just, it was a one-time deal.
Sam?
Well, ever since I got back on the council, I've been kind of keeping an eye on the lake levels. Not that, you know, my observations are going to change on any of them, but I go to KPU Electric and I go to SEPA, and, uh, not being a, a technical type guy, I wish the, the schematic thing on SEPA was a little more user-friendly for, for, not so esoteric. You know, there'd be some notes or some, uh, something down there that would, you know, give me a little bit more information about what's actually going on. And then at the, uh, ktn.ac.us, the KPU Electric, and I'm on the Electric Division. At the top, it says, uh, we have a yellow condition for lake levels, and then at the bottom, it says current renewable energy status is red. So then, I'm all confused, so maybe you take a look at that and, you know, pick one or the other. And then getting back to the green build, I, uh, was not, um, I was very heartened and moved to see how, um, that municipalities everywhere are looking at how they operate internally and doing, and, and really looking at the way that they've done business forever, and really asking themselves some hard questions. So, that's where that question about the, the KPU Electric came from. I mean, again, it's not that I can, you know, that I have, you know, the answers for it, but I was really excited when the council had brought up, you know, getting some consultants in that were very knowledgeable and helpful for us to come up with what's the best path forward for what we have. And I think we have an obligation to the people that we represent to produce that, and so I think that's a good path forward, and I learned it from you. So, thanks a lot.
Julie?
Nothing.
Judy?
I don't have anything. Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and, uh, that's all I got.
Dave?
Uh, yeah, a couple, a couple things, Ron. Brief, brief things. First of all, thank you to the Electric Department for, for the lovely report on the, uh, on the, the suicidal avian creatures of our, of our area and, and the various bird strikes. It's, it's, it's good to have, exciting to say, well, this was a bird, and that was a bird, because people are always asking what caused the owls, and that was good. Second thing, kudos to both the Fire Department and the Police Department, um, on the incident with the, the, the crash on, uh, the bypass. You know, good. You guys, you guys, crews did, did, did good.
Okay. Mark?
Nothing, no.
Um, a couple things. AML was very informative. Uh, there was a considerable amount of talk about taxing the internet, what's going on with Wayfair versus Idaho and how that may play into the state ability to tax online sales. The AML is taking another direction, and they'll probably have something back in February for their meeting then. Um, it was a good time to, um, meet and work with mayors from, uh, a variety of different communities throughout Alaska, and I must tell you that we're, um, we should be thankful for what we have. Some of the, some of the infrastructure issues that they have are just striking. Um, and as a matter of fact, some of their communities are in, in real trouble of erosion issues, uh, lack of water and sanitation issues, almost third world country stuff. And then there were a number of, uh, of course, uh, new representatives. Uh, we had a, uh, opportunity to meet with Senator Stedman while he was up there, and, uh, they were doing their organization, and of course Burke made it on to co-chair of finance, uh, managing the operating budget. So, he placed himself very well for our district, uh, which will be nice in regards to things like the ferry system and other infrastructure issues. But overall, I think that, uh, the, the trend was optimistic. They all had, uh, something going for them. They're all trying some different things. There's a lot of programs, uh, the federal government, uh, in regards to infrastructure issues and workforce development. There was a lot of discussion in regards to Alaska being open for business and trying to diversify our economy and, and use the resources that we have, so that was all positive. But I thought it went real well. Um, one of the breakout sessions we had, our, uh, assistant manager sat on a panel and talked about, uh, the cruise industry, and, um, I think that, uh, Ketchikan was well suited for, uh, uh, information. There was a lot of misinformation and a lot of skepticism about how the tourism industry, uh, impacted, uh, communities and what, uh, and how they work with them. So, I thought that, uh, that was a very good, uh, breakout, and it was, uh, well-attended and a lot of, uh, frank discussions, so I thought it went real well. And thank you, A C, for sitting on that panel. But I think that, uh, Ketchikan was very well represented. We had, uh, members of our, our council, uh, or the Borough Assembly in just about every breakout session there, learning about stuff in regards to crime and drugs and, uh, economy and, and other things that are going on in the state, so I thought it was very good. And then I want to, of course, congratulate Kara on her, uh, new position. I think that's fantastic, and we can take existing employees and, and be able to, uh, move them up the ladder like that. I think that's a great thing for the community.
So that brings us down to, is there any other new business?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I forgot one thing.
Okay, Sam, go ahead.
So, uh, during the summer, we have, where we're doing some testing for fecal coliform. Somebody help me with that word. AML, you know what I'm talking about? So, I just wanted to see if there's any interest in us doing some testing, uh, on the off-season to, for our information.
We're, we're already doing some for our...
We are doing testing to parallel what DEC has been doing during the summer months. We're, we did some into the fall. We're at a point now where we don't believe we have to continue doing testing during the winter months.
Are those results going to be made public?
If that's the council's desire, we certainly can provide those results.
I'd like to see them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have we noticed a difference?
I'm trying.
Has there been a difference between summer and winter?
I'll have to defer to the Public Works Director.
Uh, Mark Hilson, Public Works Director. Yes, as expected, as temperatures went down, fecal counts went down as well. So, there's quite a leveling off as we progress to colder temperatures.
So, does that tell, I have a question. So, does that tell us whether or not it's due to the ship? You know, because people are going to assume the cruise ships, so it went down.
Well, we're talking about two different, so the, the creeks have obviously nothing to do with the cruise ships, so...
Right. Oh, these are...
And we only monitor Thomas Basin, so that's where we did our blind sampling. So, as the, the, you know, there's, there's fewer people in and around Thomas Basin, there's, uh, fewer fecals coming down the creek into Thomas Basin, uh, so it would be expected that that would go down as well. And as the temperature drops in the water, the fecal count drops in Thomas Basin as well, so, um, DEC did some other beach testing, uh, but they're outside the limits of the city.
Is it possible they'd be willing to share that with us?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. They said that they would be sharing it. Yep.
So, don't we have harbors outside the city?
So, yeah, we have, uh, we have Canute's and Cove, and we have, uh, well, Boat Launch at Mount Point. Yes.
We don't...
And Hole in the Wall. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah.
So, so we're not testing. I, I, and the reason that I brought that up was is that there was a lot of discussion about where the origin of these high, high counts were coming from. And so, you know, that's not just to, like, take account, oh, yeah, well, it's gone down. I, I, I think that the testing in the places other than where you're testing would probably more indicate, indicated if, you know, if this was a cruise ship, um, caused.
It could be, and there was also some, this year, there was, uh, something unique going on in that there was some testing in the channel itself, so not just along the beaches. So, we'll be interested to see how those results come in as well.
So, those are the results that I was particularly interested in. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So that moves us into, uh, executive session. Item one, request for an executive session potential litigation regarding the Leighton-Dawson Joint Venture Constructors' performance of its contractual obligations under contract number 13-38A, Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project. Have a motion.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to declare that consistent with the City Attorney's Request dated October 29th, 2018, it is in the best interest of the City Council to go into executive session in accordance with KMC 204025A1 and 3 to discuss Leighton-Dawson Joint Venture Constructors' performance of its contractual obligations under contract number 13-38A for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project, which includes the needs discussed subjects, the knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city, and to discuss potential litigation strategies within the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Then move in second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingie?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yep.
All right. So we start into executive session.
I said for Steve Allen's left.
They all ran away.
All right. We're back out of the executive session. Uh, we've just discussed the items and gave management direction. That brings us on to item two, request for an executive session potential litigation regarding Bigger Alaska LLC's performance of its contractual obligations under contract number 1736-Birth-3 Barge Overhaul. May I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council to declare that consistent with the City Manager's Request dated November 2nd, 2018, it is in the city's best interest, uh, the City Council's best interest to go into executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 204025A1 and 3 to discuss potential litigation regarding Bigger Alaska LLC's performance of its contractual obligations under contract number 1736-Birth-3 Barge Overhaul, which includes the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on, upon the finances of the city, and to discuss potential litigation strategies with the attorney-client privilege.
Second. Then move in second. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingie?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yep.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Now, we're going to reset to the executive session.
Change the stuff.
All right. We're back in, uh, session. We, uh, discussed the items in the executive session and gave management direction. Bring us to item three, request for an executive session negotiation and amendment to the Burke War lease agreement to undertake facility modifications to accommodate post-Penney Act vessels for the, you know, 2019, 2016 Ketchikan company.
Your Honor, I move the City Council to declare, consistent with the City Manager's memorandum dated November 2nd, 2018, it is in the best interest of the City Council to discuss negotiation of the amendment of the lease and other definitive agreements between the city and the Ketchikan Company LLC related to expansion of berth four to accommodate larger vessels in executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.025A1 and 3, which includes the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city, and to receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
Second. Move in second. Any discussion?
You have a comma in the other one, because otherwise we're accommodating larger vessels in executive session.
Please call the roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Kifer? Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingie?
Yes.
Executive session, we discussed the item and question and gave management direction.
Motion to adjourn?
As long as waiting for. I didn't want to get in there.
All right. All right. So, we have a motion to adjourn?